Eric?
How are you?
Good, I'm good.
Hello everyone.
Check one, two.
So did we, uh, go through the order and so, we get anywhere with the Zoom?
Check one, two. Check one, two.
Yeah, so you wanna, you wanna hear what it sounds like?
Hi Ange.
Hi Ange.
They're like super loud.
The ambient noise and then, this is us talking into the microphone.
Check one, two, three, four, five.
So each mic then has priority. Yep. I'm saying, yep.
I may have another one of those.
Yep, same thing, same thing. Okay. Yeah, well, that, when last time it was going through the telephone, so, or bypassing it. I was just trying to.
Yeah, we had it in church.
Right.
We streamed it, yeah.
Okay, I knew she said you guys were gonna do it somewhere, but nowhere.
Yeah, we had it all set up, we had about thirty people there. And then we had all lunch, so the ladies.
I haven't got lunch though.
Yeah, yeah.
You guys.
We probably would've had something in the way, but that's, thank you, but, yeah, I'll try to make sure.
Work?
Yeah. It's been a rough couple of years.
But no, it went well.
Good.
And they really appreciate it. Some, uh, some of his, uh, Henry's relatives here.
Oh, okay. Oh, good, okay.
We're glad we did.
Yeah, I bet.
Ski, we're like, we're gonna be, uh, Bergis Minnesota, over around Williams with fire department.
Yeah.
Chestnut. Oh, is it? Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, one a year.
I might have to buy one.
But we did Walleye.
Yeah. I used to have a lady in town, every time I had something in the paper, she'd bring me four or five copies. She said, "You might need some to send to your relatives." But she passed away, so I don't have that anymore. Oh, okay.
Yeah, the like, the old nineteen and a half. Yeah, it was good too, it was good.
Come on.
Still on the dot.
Hey Wayne, you got a second? When you're done, that's fine.
Yeah, three is play out.
Charlie, Charlie, you got my word, I can't cross my fingers no more.
How are you? Good, how you doing? Good. Two weeks away, three weeks, alright? All four.
All four.
Every July.
So it's the last week of July.
Are you getting to go back and you take the line down or not?
Enter your particular ID, followed by town. Up, you can.
What's up Ken?
Last week, I went to something, you know, say like that.
Mm-hmm.
And to get back, you hit that.
Nope.
But it wouldn't work last time.
So what, what you did, there's two different tabs up here, you know, so you opened a new tab, so you need to go back to the original tab. And that's.
But this is the ori, this is what I.
Yeah, the RCCM one is the main, like your home base.
That's what I didn't know.
That's what I didn't.
Hey, I'm, something?
Something.
Are you hearing it now?
Hearing it now.
I can hear the echo.
I hear the echo.
I hear the echo.
That's all you need to do, is hear me twice. How you doing now? Good enough. You gave me my permission for a night there.
You are muted.
You are muted.
You are muted.
We're here in the mountains. Okay, what do you want me to say? Sheldon's the greatest place in the world.
I hit that for the very first time.
Yeah.
Well, you know. Likely will be a player, somebody truly unknown.
You're doing, you're doing nothing, I think it's already.
Right, it's already.
The host would like you to unmute your microphone. You are unmuted.
You getting that old hatchery cleaned out, are ya? I'm gonna get an extra pillow. Hey, you got conimnoids or something? We can't get fumblest anymore.
No.
Well, they, they're, they affect, yeah. There's an extra chair over there. My goodness.
It's okay. I'll live with it, I'mma, I'mma sell Ange next week. Are we ready? We don't have to wait?
Going through Todd's.
Hey Ange.
Hi Tom.
How are ya?
I'm good, you?
Okay, please? Alright, let's begin. Alright, let's begin here today. It is six oh two. Welcome to all of you. Like to begin by, uh, starting our meetings as traditional. We've got a echo coming here, so. Uh, but let, let's stand here for a moment of silence, and then we'll follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance.
You are muted.
Alright, please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If we could have a roll call, please.
Pete Hamel?
Here.
Ken Snyder?
Here.
Brad Hahn?
Here.
Wayne Barahona?
Here.
Tom Eggers?
Here. Here. Alright, then you have before the agenda?
Well, we'll leave it on just in case. Give it to me, I can control. I smart.
Alright. Uh, back to item two on the agenda, the approval of the agenda. Take a motion from someone for that?
Some move.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Snyder?
Approve.
Hamel?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Alright, moving on to item three, our public forum. Is there anyone that intends to speak at this time regarding items on or off the agenda? I see no movement out there. Anybody on Zoom? Okay. Then I will now forego the reading of our instructions. And we will then move on to the consent agenda.
Move that we accept the consent agenda?
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Eggers?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Moving right along. Next item up is the grant agreement in support of the Sheldon Community Daycare Center and the nursery school. Like to open the public hearing on that if we could. Anyone that wishes to speak to that? Have we had any written comments?
None.
Okay, there are seven letters of support from various agencies and, uh, businesses in town, all speaking in favor of it. If there are no further comments, then a motion to close the public hearing?
Some move.
Support.
Roll call?
Snyder?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
And then item B under number five is the, or item two, excuse me, uh, resolution approving the grant agreement. You have that in your packets?
All move.
Support.
Any discussion? Any comments from you? Roll call, please.
Eggers?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Alright, item six, a resolution to authorize purchase of the police vehicle. There's an explanation there, a lengthy explanation from both Sam and Chief Birch. Are there any questions on that at all? Okay, uh, then we need to approve the resolution to authorize that purchase. I'll take a motion for that.
I move that we, uh, accept the resolution as presented.
And is there support?
Support.
Alright, now, are there any comments or questions regarding this? Resolution? Roll call, please.
Barahona?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Alright, now the real reason we're all here tonight, the aerial fire truck discussion. Uh, this time Chuck, are you coming forward to speak? If you would, step to the mic and then, uh, introduce yourself. And the floor is yours.
Thank you. Whoa. How's that? Here? Perfect. Thanks for having us, Chuck Ball, Sheldon Fire Department Truck Captain, so, um, tonight we're kinda just kinda going over what we are, where we are in that process, and showing you what we found at this point, trying to make a recommendation on which way we think we should go, so. Um, PowerPoint's up there, I think you guys have access to that as well, so. Things that we wanna talk about tonight is, I know the question was raised at the last meeting, do we really need a ladder truck here in Sheldon? Um, kinda how long should we expect the truck to last? What we found on the used market out there, what we found on the new market, and then kinda the comparison between the two is the way we've kinda put this together, and trying to make the most sense of it, make the best decision we can as, as a department, so. Um, first of all, with, do we really need a ladder truck? It quit clicking. Oh, he'll get there. So, if you look around town, we, about eighteen years ago, we went through this once on, do we really need a ladder truck? And yes, Sheldon definitely needs a ladder truck. Um, if you go drive around town, you're gonna see those buildings that really require us to have that truck, the height, the things that are there, things we can't reach really any other way, so. Do you drive around and see the AGPs of the world, things like that? You wanna just hit next? Please?
Can it, does it click yet?
Worked earlier. We know a guy that should be able to fix this.
Try again Chuck. Not for forty-five dollars a meter.
You can just hit the spacebar if you want, Todd. That doesn't work either? She locked up on ya? Either way, when you look at the pictures, you can see that, and we, we have a lot of buildings, you go downtown and you see the buildings that are up there and the height that they're, they're at, trying to put a ladder on is going to be quite the challenge. Hey, there you go, you got her now. Um, that's one of the issues. The other issue we have is, if we don't have a ladder truck here in town, we're gonna have to call somebody. The need is there for a ladder truck on these fires. The nearest one to us is gonna be probably Orange City, and if they're available, that's gonna take thirty to forty minutes for it to get here. A good rule of thumb is double the miles for time of arrival for us. Well, forty minutes away, most of our fires are won and lost in that first thirty minutes, trying to get the water where it needs to be at the appropriate time. If we don't have that ability right away, that's gonna be a detriment to us and our community, so. Um, buildings that we were kinda talking about that are obvious are, you know, the downtown, the Christian Retirement Home, the AGPs, um, Ag Partners, the new expansion that's going into the AGP in their eighty-foot silos. Those are all ones you can look at and go, yeah, definitely. What you don't think about is that single-story home, that two-story home, that we can use this ladder truck five foot off the ground. You know, Scott made a good point at the last meeting, if we can take somebody off of a ground ladder and put them in a bucket, we're gonna be in a much safer place, so. That single-story home is just as much a spot where we can use that ladder truck as your AGPs or your, your big elevators and things like that, so. It is a very useful tool, no matter what the height of that building is. Um, when we start looking at trying to prevent injuries, that's one of the big things we've looked at, is keeping people off ground ladders, having safe ways to, to load the hose, things like that, it's kinda one of the big pictures we were looking at. Trying to keep working comp claims down and stuff like that, as you guys know, that can be one of those spots in our field that happens quite often, it's very easy to get somebody injured on a fire ground there, so. But there are also a lot of other uses for that ladder truck. Um, getting water streams where they need to be through roofs, getting elevated anchor points for rescue points, um, pump capacity. Even if we didn't replace the ladder truck, we'd still have to put a pump in that station for, for pump capacity ratings. So whether we buy a ladder truck or another pumper, we have to do something, and it makes more sense to go through the ladder and get all those benefits of that as well. And it still serves the purpose of getting the firemen to the scene. We still have to get personnel there, is one of the major jobs of that truck, so. Insurance and ISOs, we get credit for that with the ladder trucks, so. In our opinion, there's really no way Sheldon can be without that ladder truck. So, now whether we go used or new is kinda, used or new is where we went and started looking at it. When the accident happened, we knew we had to do something, so we kinda set off with, let's go look at used, but let's also explore the new option, kinda look at both paths and see where it leads us, so. That's kind of where we went. Uh, we looked at a few new, or a few used trucks out there, whether we went and looked at them, looked at them online, found the information about it. I know you've got some lists of different trucks out there in your information packet. Um, what we found really kinda surprised us. Uh, eleven, twelve years ago, we purchased the last ladder truck we had, and I believe the purchase price was a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. So we were kind of in that mindset, maybe that's where that market would be again. What we found out was, it's not that market anymore, so. The trucks that we were looking at here ranged from anywhere from two thousand five to two thousand twelve, but share anywhere from that three hundred fifty to six hundred thousand dollars for a used truck. One thing to keep in mind is, how long do these trucks last? In twenty-five years, trucks are pretty well used up. I kind of look at them like an airplane, they look pretty and shiny on the outside, but a lot of the components on the inside, the plumbing, the electrical systems, they degrade over time, in twenty-five years, those things are really starting to, to have issues at that point, so. We kinda look at that twenty-five years as being the lifespan of a, of a ladder truck at that point, so. As you look at these, you know, if you buy a two thousand five, you're already sixteen-years-old truck, you might get nine years of service left out of that truck, possibly. Or if we went to the newer one, the two thousand twelve, then you've got, got a little bit more time, but with that comes that price tag. So, the other thing we found on the used market is, it's not really always set up for the way you want. Uh, a lot of these were city trucks, and city trucks run smaller crews, 'cause they don't have the personnel, so four-man cabs are pretty standard on these, where we like to have that six, so we can still get people to the scene. Um, their hose loads, they don't necessarily do the hose loads, because they don't necessarily have to carry the hose to the scene, they like to keep another truck committed for that, to keep personnel on payroll and stuff like that, so. A lot of these trucks just weren't set up for how we operate, um, or anything like that. Some of them were Canadian trucks, where they have a lot of issues with corrosion and things like that, so I know it was the two thousand, two thousand eighty-one, um, decent year for half a million dollars, but they're already talking out of the gate that would need a hundred thousand dollar refurb, so. Then, that's what we're finding all the way across the used market, so I mean, it's an option, but that's, that's what we're seeing for prices, so we really started looking at that, that new side a little bit more, so we got three quotes for news truck, or used, new trucks as well, but. Some of the advantages of going used, obviously there are some advantages, there's less money up front, obviously it's not as big a price tag right out of the gate, and we'd be able to have a truck suitor, be able to fill that station again. Downsides, we're, we're buying somebody else's issues at that point, that's really what we found out is, most of these places are getting rid of trucks for, for a reason. Um, dependability becomes an issue with age, and dependability is one of those things we really need on a, on a fire truck. Those trucks are in emergency situations, we really wanted to respond well. Repair costs, um, on a used truck, pretty much gonna start right away. You know, it's a used truck at that point, we're gonna be doing repairs right away, and that's gonna cost us some money, how much depends on the truck, but it's something that's gonna be there right away on that used side. The used trucks don't have the new safety features that the new trucks do, so, that's another downside. And if we do buy a used truck, if we get ten or fifteen years of service out of it, depending on how old the truck we buy, we're gonna be right back here in ten or fifteen years looking at replacing another used truck. And what kinda scared us is, okay, if the market jumped this much from two thousand eleven to now, what's this market gonna do from two thousand eleven to ten or fifteen years from now? So, that's kind of one of those unknowns, but the way it's looking is it's gonna be an expensive truck on the used side again, on the backside, so. With that, we also looked at three options on new, so we priced a new Rosenbauer, and with these prices, we tried to basically do apples for apples. So they're both, they're all one hundred foot rear mount platforms, which is what we want, that's what we've had, it works good for our operation. Each company's gonna have little tweaks that are theirs, that are gonna be different from other ones, but they're all basically as close as we can get to the same truck, so. Rosenbauer respect is a million nineteen thousand dollars. The, uh, Spartan Smeele is one million sixty-six thousand dollars. And, uh, the Pierce is, depending on how you pay, either one point two one or one point one nine. So that cheaper price up there, if you pay for one hundred percent of that up front, you get a discount on that. So there are options there for a council to decide how they'd weather, or how they'd wanna do that. So, and that's the three we priced, uh, and we kinda looked at that, went, okay, what's the pros and cons of what we saw on the used market versus what we saw on the new market? And kinda came up with a few lists, and one of them is, if we do a new truck, we're gonna be able to run that truck for twenty or twenty-five years. We're not having to replace that in ten or fifteen years down the road. So, warranties on these trucks are typically twenty-five years on the frame and the boom, and we've been down that road before, our first ladder truck, we had to replace the frame on with the rust and corrosion that we see around this part. That was an issue we've run into before, so that's a big thing for us. One of the biggest things is we're not buying somebody else's problems. We're not buying something that the motor's been out on, or they're having issues with, it's new out of the gate, we can take care of it from there, and if we do have problems, we're at the warranty stage and things like that for us. One of the biggest benefits, though, is that we can spec it to what we do with operations. How do we need that truck set up for what we do on our, on our department? Um, and recruitment's always one of those things on our list. Um, it's small town, we have a hard time getting people just like everybody else. Shiny new trucks do make a difference for recruitment, trying to get people in that door and help their community, trucks do make a difference, so. But the new safety features are probably some of the biggest advantages we found, as we started looking at these new options, it's like, wow, they've come a long way from where we were on our last truck, so. Some of the safety features are automatic leveling systems, which set the outriggers out, hit a button, and they basically get themselves set up in the nice, the perfect spot. Um, they've got load control, where if you have to put an outrigger in short for a carbine in some spot or too close to a building, you can't overextend a short outrigger and tip the truck over. The, the safety features on that truck prevent that, so, can prevent a major mishap from happening. Uh, remote controls now, so if we had to put it in a bad situation, we don't have to commit personnel to it. We can set it up, walk away, and run it with the remote from a safe distance, which is another huge feature for us, so. There are a lot of nice features out there for, for the safety improvements over the last fifteen years. Um, obviously there's disadvantages to that. It's a larger expense up front, and the build times. You're, you're looking at anywhere from, I believe it's three hundred and thirty days to four hundred and forty-five days, if I'm correct. I'm not the best with numbers on that, but I think I'm pretty close, so. So, we kinda sat back and looked at it, and started playing the numbers game a little bit, started punching some of these numbers in, um, so kinda looked at a twenty-five-year lifespan. If we went and purchased a fifteen-year-old truck out of the gate, which is gonna be one of the cheaper ones we can look at, at a cost of roughly four hundred and fifty thousand, over that ten years of life that it's got, it's gonna cost us roughly a hundred and twenty-five bucks a day. And that's just kinda how we broke it down, is per day, just as a number to throw out there. Um, if we purchased a newer truck that was ten years old, we'd be able to run that truck for roughly fifteen years. So we took that price of six hundred thousand, 'cause you're gonna pay more for a newer truck, broke that down over the fifteen years of life it has left, come up with a hundred and nine dollars per day. And we did the same exact thing with the new truck option, roughly a million dollars, broken down over either a twenty or twenty-five year service life, uh, and you get anywhere from a hundred and thirty-six to that hundred and nine dollars a day again. So if we ran it for twenty-five years, it's basically the same money as if you bought a ten-year-old truck. Or if you wanted to get rid of that earlier and get resale back out, there's options that could be feasible for that as well. So, the biggest thing that you don't show on here again is, if we had to purchase one of these top two options as a used truck, if we've had to do this again in ten or fifteen years, if we figure a used truck fifteen years from now is eight hundred thousand dollars, you're already at, you know, one point four million dollars in this same span, basically, as you would've had if you purchased a new one now. So, given that, kind of our recommendation has been to, to move towards that direction, so. I know Danny, I think you wanted to make a recommendation? Is that something you wanna do?
Good evening, guys.
Say your name.
Dennis Strugger, I'm fire chief in Sheldon.
Thank you.
My recommendation is we go Spartan. Uh, everybody on the department is kinda leaning that way, we have a lot of Spartan trucks. I'm not taking anything away from any of the other ones.
You're gonna have to step a little closer.
Okay. Okay, my recommendation is we go Spartan. Not taking anything away from any of the other trucks. We have a couple Spartan, we usually run Spartan trucks, we've had good luck with them, service-wise, good rate shot. So, as a department, that's my recommendation, and everybody else's too, so. Any questions?
Uh, the drivetrains in all of these pretty much the same, do they all use the same components or?
Yeah, for the most part, if you, you can spec the engine, whether you do Cummins or Detroit or something like that, most of them are all running the Allison four thousand series transmission, so. That was one of the biggest things we didn't like about that one, we went down and looked at, in Alabama, it was, it had a Max Force motor, which if you talk to anybody, it's kinda scary, and that one's had nothing but engine issues since the day it was made, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Just a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, go ahead, Tom.
Just a question, Chuck.
Yep.
In your presentation on this, specifically to the slide that's up right now, uh, one thing that your daily cost does not, uh, cover would be, uh, those maintenance costs that you had brought up previously, correct?
Yep.
So, that one oh nine and, and one twenty-five would probably more effectively be larger, a larger per day.
Yeah, these are strictly cost based off purchase price over time, so. Maintenance items, you're still gonna have oil changes, you're still gonna have pump inspections, you're still gonna have ladder inspections yearly. What you won't get with the new are those, those repair bills right away, 'cause there's obviously gonna be a warranty period and things like that, so we won't have any large repair bills for the first.
Right.
Section of time.
'Cause there's, there is scheduled maintenance for the ladder.
Absolutely, yeah.
Scheduled maintenance for the pumps.
Yeah, they have to be certified every year for us, so.
And that'll be no matter which stuff you get.
Yep. Whether you go used or new. Whether you go new or used.
Used and new, that's scheduled.
On the certifications, yes, but not.
Out on the maintenance.
Not on the maintenance.
Yep.
Okay.
Chuck, you brought up during your presentation about the used trucks and, and the usual lifespans that you find them. And then you brought up a few examples there. What kind of trucks, I, I guess, enlighten me, what kind of departments would be getting rid of a fire, of a ladder truck after ten years? Is it, is it usually because there's an issue?
Depending on that, you also get cities that have certain timeframes, they replace their trucks after X amount of years. We try to stay around that twenty years at our department too. Cities, they're obviously putting more miles, more wear and more tear on it. So a lot of those you're seeing, cities are documenting those out on a specific date, so. Other departments are just when it seems fit, so to speak, so.
Sure. And I guess one of the things that I do find attractive is about the, the new purchases, looking at our, our cost per day, you know, if we're looking at a hundred and nine dollars a day or a hundred and twenty dollars a day, whatever it might be, that's in twenty, twenty-one dollars. Whereas, you know, twenty-five years from now, we're still going to be paying that twenty, twenty-one price. So that, that to me, I, I think that cost per day would actually be, would be going down.
Right.
As far as.
The reality is we started this process, process off with a used mindset. I mean, that's where we thought we were going to go because that's where we've been before. And the market really drove us this way. We never thought we'd sit here and tell you we were ready for a new truck. It's just, it makes more sense to us to go the new route at this point because of the prices on the market and I don't see that market changing anytime soon, so.
You just talked about repairs, that frame and whatever it was cost, the boom and frame. What did that cost? How much was that? I mean approximately? Is that one of the higher items?
I want, that's been a long time ago. I could throw a number out, but I've got no idea if I'm anywhere close to that ballpark, so.
Didn't we patch it, Scott? Thought we patched it.
I'll answer that as best I can. You'll probably never get that done again. Kip Mager rebuilt the frame on a first aerial that we had. That frame was completely rusted out, didn't pass inspection and Kip made it rebuild it. I'm not sure Sudfin would probably have put their stamp of approval on that at the time we did it, but we kept it moving at that point.
I was just wondering the, the expense, you know, these repair expenses, are you looking at a gigantic number or?
If you were to do that on this, on a newer aerial right now, that truck would be totaled. It's where we're at with the boom on this, you know. Kip Mager did that and I would say it was more of a donation on Kip's part than anything else.
Okay.
So, yeah.
And in answer, anything on a heavy duty truck is more expensive, but generally they don't happen as often because they are heavy duty.
Yep.
That was rusted out.
Yeah.
It was a Minneapolis truck, a used Minneapolis truck.
That answers a lot.
Sam has another question.
Thank you, Chief, I have a question for you. So two citizens who may ask about buying a truck that is forty-seven thousand more, are there some other differentiating factors that you can point to in addition to the preference?
I, like I say, I'm not going to run down one or the other. As we as a department feel, the Smeele, the Spartan's bucket, it's more usable, a lot better. It opens up more for us. We can get on, like get on the roof if we got a ventilator, it's, it's more that way. If you're going to go that way, I think once three hundred and sixty-some days per delivery, Spartan is, the other one's four hundred and some. What would it cost us for rental, extra rental is going to be thirty, forty thousand. So you got most of that difference right there.
Anyone else?
On these various new options, are warranties the same across manufacturers?
Yeah, very, very similar.
You mentioned safety and workman's comp claims and such. How much have we had, how many claims have we had or how many injuries in the last five to ten years? Is that a common thing or?
Not real common, I know we've, we've had a few.
I know a couple, I won't go into any detail here.
Okay, that's fine. And then eleven to twelve years ago, we purchased the last truck, correct? The current truck?
Two thousand twenty, two thousand eleven.
And what year was that, what year truck was that at that time?
Ninety-four.
Seventy-eight boom.
The seventy-eight boom.
And I was actually due to go out in two years.
From now.
So, okay.
It was time.
Bought it August of eight, of two thousand eleven for a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars.
Good example of that truck, it's been a good truck for us, but the issues that we start to have with that is the electrical systems can't keep up anymore. You can't put any bigger alternators on it. You turn the warning lights on and go to a scene, but it takes up too much electricity, the boom doesn't operate all the time. But that's what you get with age, you get resistance in electrical circuits and things like that. And that's one of the downsides of an older truck, it just gets old.
Anyone else? All right, gentlemen, you can thank for your presentation. We have with us Scott Stevenson with, he is the managing director of public finance for DA Davidson. Is there anything you're going to want to share with us at this time?
Sure.
Welcome, Scott, good to see you again.
Yeah, glad to be here, got some new faces I haven't seen before, so good to make it up here. Just wanted to go over a few items after discussing this over a period of a couple of months with Sam, talking about kind of the financial impact on the city. So wanted to touch on two or three different subjects and then certainly answer any questions you folks might have.
If you could just adjust the microphone so it's a little closer and picks you up better, please.
Yeah, sure, is that better? Yep. So first thing I think when you're looking at something like this and borrowing some money is, does the city have adequate debt capacity to support issuing general obligation bonds for the acquisition of the fire truck? So one item I worked up an analysis on, sent to Sam, and I think you folks may have taken a look at, is just a current snapshot of where the city's debt capacity looks to be, given your current debt burden and your current valuations. Then kind of a forward-looking forecast as to what your amortization of existing debt would look like in addition to some projected valuation growth. So the fiscal year that's going to begin in two days, I suppose it would be, the city will have about seventeen and a half million dollars in available total geo debt capacity, against which you've got approximately nine million dollars in debt. So, you know, you're currently at a fifty-one-ish percent utilization of your existing debt capacity. Adding this into the picture is, you know, is going to have an impact, but depending on how much money you actually borrow, will, will change that regardless. You know, even if you borrowed up to the maximum amount, I think we're contemplating of one point three five million dollars for, for this project and a, and a few other equipment items. You know, you're, you're still going to be below sixty percent in terms of debt capacity utilization currently. So you really don't want to get all the way to a hundred percent of usage just because then if something were to come along that was unforeseen that you needed to address in a emergency manner, like for example, if, you know, one of your fire trucks got in a wreck, you had to buy a new one, you want to be in a position where you can address something like that. So I guess really just wanted to convey, you're in a good position, certainly able to handle and address this issue as well as the other urban renewal project, which isn't part of the agenda, so I don't want to get into that necessarily. But, you know, that project is mostly offset by repayment of some other debt. So I think when you look at this, you're still probably going to wind up in that sixty percent utilization of your debt capacity.
Okay. I guess the nagging question I've had all along on this is, is this, if, if we go the route new, and I don't know if you're the one to answer this or Sam, is there things we're going to have to, like we have our capital improvement plan for five years out, is there things that are going to be bumped off that list as a result of buying a new truck versus a used one?
You know, when I look at the forecast going forward, so let's just say FY twenty-four, twenty-five, which should be a few years down the road, the city will have twelve point three million dollars in available debt capacity. So I know you've got a few items out there, water towers and things like that, that will probably consume some of your debt capacity on a forward-looking basis, but you're in a very comfortable position, I guess is what I'd like to tell you.
Okay.
Using three to five million dollars now wouldn't really put you in a, in an encumbered position where it would.
Don't get any ideas, Todd.
Well, yeah, it's not a suggestion, more just a statement of where you're at.
I saw your eyebrows going up.
I'll, I'll turn it off if it's being made.
So yeah, I think you're in a good position, I guess is the summary from my standpoint. Obviously, that's a discretionary decision the city's got to make, but just relative to your peers and what I see in, in my line of work out there with other communities, the city's in a very comfortable spot as it relates to usage of your debt capacity. Also put together a little bit of a tax impact summary, so as you're analyzing cost and what that impact may be on property owners, put together some analysis on that. I don't know how much you folks have looked into that or what questions you have on it. That's fairly straightforward math, but certainly happy to answer any questions if you've got a specific direction you wanted to look at as it relates to size of borrowing and impact on a residential or commercial property owner.
I'm not seeing anybody, so thank you.
Not really a lot of discourse there. I did also provide a kind of a market update and Sam asked me to touch on just where we're at in terms of interest rates relative to where we've been historically and provided a graphical representation of the last ten years of municipal bond interest rates as well, for you to take a look at. And really what that tells us is back in twenty twenty, as a result of COVID primarily, we really saw rates plummet to historically all-time lows. And that's not just in the last ten years, that's in the history of the US kind of timeframe. We've bounced up off that a little bit, but nonetheless, I think if you look at ten-year borrowing rates of one, one and a half percent, still in an extraordinary low interest rate environment, how long that prevails is anybody's guess. You know, there's starting to get to be more conversation about inflation and what impact that may have on the economy. And we could see higher rates certainly in the future. I don't know whether that's true or not, I'm not making a prediction, but we're just saying that's where we're at today, where we'll be at tomorrow is, you know, information I don't have obviously. But from a historical perspective, we're at extraordinarily, extraordinarily low interest rates.
Okay, so if you don't mind, Mayor, I'd like to point out, I want to come to that capacity, that it was only just a couple of years ago that we were at a point where we were at ninety-four percent. And through our efforts over the past few years and, and good management, stewardship of the money, we're at, where we're at today and, and with a sixty percent after a purchase of this nature. Point I'm trying to make is that because of our stewardship and, and we can, we were put into a position where we can actually deal with this. And in the past, we would not have been able to deal with this. So I just want to make sure that everyone understands that. Not only, you know, sixty percent is a good place to be with a purchase like this, but that's still thirty-four points lower than what it was in two thousand eighteen, so.
I was trying not to remember that, but okay.
Sam, you got a comment or a question?
I do. Scott, my question for you is regarding the hundred and fifty thousand dollar fire marshal loan that's available to us. It's an application that we would have to submit, be approximately sixty days to hear and answer. It's a zero percent fifteen-year loan and I've asked you, I asked you about that the other day. And do you mind going over that real quick? So we'd save about one, two?
Yeah, I don't remember the numbers, I'm saying off the top of my head, but I think there's. I think the fairest way to analyze that is, okay, if you didn't utilize that loan and you had to borrow the money from traditional means, i.e. the bond market, what sort of interest cost would you expect to incur on a loan like that over that, you know, ten-year amortization, similar amortization? And I think the number I came up with was, was thirteen thousand dollars of total interest you would incur on a bond market loan of, you know, equal size. Against that, you're going to have, you know, some cost of administration of the loan, of legal costs, you know, to, to issue a separate loan. All those documents have to be drawn up, you know, it's a separate closing, it's a whole separate process and protocol you'd have to go through. So you would incur some cost against that sort of savings. So, you know, just to try to give you an idea of what sort of economic benefit may exist there, that's sort of the range. How much the, you know, your costs actually would be, really don't have a lot to do with me, so I don't want to speak to that because those aren't my fees per se. But certainly a few thousand dollars at a minimum I would expect just in, in legal fees to afford something like that. That also would count against your debt capacity, so it's kind of a separate analysis. You know, the economic benefit is one side of the equation, but it would impact your debt capacity the same, whether it's a loan from the, from the fire marshal or from the bond market.
Just to make sure I got this, that is not the USDA loan you are not recording, this is a separate.
Separate law.
Hundred fifty thousand, okay.
If I might.
Yes.
So Angie and I have discussed that one and Alors Cooney has informed us that the draft that they have seen from the fire marshal that collateralizes the truck and under Iowa code, you can't take back the fire truck. So there's some issues with that agreement, but even assuming those issues weren't there, it'd still be six, six to seven thousand dollars for the bond council costs. And then you'd have two, two separate payments that you'd be working through. I, I think that that loan would be worth it if the interest rates were higher than they are now. But Angie and I recommend that we skip that one and go with just general obligation.
Skip the firemen's as well?
Skip, skip the hundred and fifty thousand dollar note from the fire marshal's office and just do general obligation.
All right, any more questions for Scott?
No, thank you.
All right, thanks guys. Thank you. All right, now it's our turn, fellows. Any further comments or questions? Based on all the information that's been handed to us tonight or given to us tonight as well as published in numerous emails through the last couple of weeks.
I guess we have to first decide used or new, it's kind of step one, right? Which I think we go new, that's my personal opinion, not, this is a, a voting matter, but I think as long as we're all on the same page, we can.
I, I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, for all of the reasons that the presentation made, I, those are good reasons and I, I would also go with that. I know it's a lot of money, but I think it's worth it.
Right. That was one of the initial concerns that I had was whether we could financially swing it.
And I have to admit, I've changed my viewpoint from the first day.
I would agree, I agree you have and, and, and that's good. I mean, I think the department did a good job of laying out the advantages of, of the direction that they, they're recommending. And the fact that interest rates are where they're at right now and along with the fact that our debt capacity is not going to be strained. I, I think it's, I think it's a responsible decision to go new, so.
Any other questions that, now would be the time. If not, we're going to move on to the public input, this portion of this. Okay, I mean, oh. All right. Based on, where is it? Just so you have an idea of what type of motion to be thinking about. This is a recommendation coming from our city manager. The recommended motion would be to authorize the application for the $150,000 state fire marshal financing and essential corporate purpose general obligation notes up to, we have to fill in that blank, for emergency service vehicles, equipment. The obligation would be paid off as follows, fire marshal loan. No, that is, that is the one you're speaking again, I'm not going to do that. Okay, so we strike that then. So it's just going to be a general obligation, no, no fire marshal financing, no USDA. Okay? So then the government obligation note would be paid from a combination of the insurance settlement and mainly the general obligation property tax levy. The levy would not be impacted until fiscal year '22, '23. This would be reviewed during the annual budgeting process and could potentially offset using local option sales tax. We're not going to use the fire capital improvement fund, so that's stricken, and the ambulance depreciation fund for the ambulance portion if we decide to go that route. The amount will depend on council discussion, which we're going, what we're doing, and the news from the USDA rural development over the next few weeks. That is also not part of it anymore, as I understand, correct?
Yes, so it's a little bit confusing, but with USDA, the aerial truck is off the table in terms of USDA, in terms of USDA rural development funding. And the reason it's off the table is because of the, of the time, of the timeframe. USDA funding, once it's awarded, you have to start the quote process from the beginning, and basically it subtracts from the ability to receive funding for other projects. So that is, that has been removed from the USDA rural development application that was at the recommendation of, of the, our USDA contact and the grant writer. What still is in play is grant funding for, from USDA for the rest of the projects that we have applied for. And we do have a good chance of being rewarded approximately $212,000 out of a project request of $713,500. In that scenario, $501,000 would be the amount of the estimated local match. So rural development process has taken a long time. It started over a year ago, and we went to public hearing this past January. I do not know when we're, when we're going to be offered the funds. And you also have the philosophical issue of do you want to use 15-year bond funds to buy an ambulance with a nine-year lifespan or police equipment that has lesser lifespan? It becomes a philosophy issue. So there's a couple of ways to do this, is bond only for what you need for the fire truck and deal with the other requests as it comes in. But, but don't be surprised if the other request comes in in a matter of a few months, and then we have to decide how to, how to handle that.
The advantage of that sound would be is we know what we'd be dealing with at that time, which we don't today.
That's correct.
So it seems prudent that we wait until we know what we're dealing with, so.
Sam, I'm still trying to wrap my head around the, going away from the fireman's, the fire marshal's loan. So if our, if our gross savings are $13,000 in comparison to the, what we'd get off the bond market, and you estimate the, the closing costs and the, the capital cost to be $6,000, $7,000, we still have a net savings of $6,000, $7,000, right?
True. You also have the cost of the application, which is more of an administrative cost. You have the, the cost of waiting for the funds, which isn't bad. You have the cost of, of, what was the other cost? There was another cost. You have the cost of.
Let me mention something about having two payments.
Yep, you have the cost of, of having two payments, and I'll think of the other one in just a moment.
Just trying to stall for you.
Yeah. Angie, you want to help me out with this? Do you remember what the other one, what the other reason was?
Interest rates.
Did it talk about our conversation with taking that out of the depreciation fund and then just dwindling that down to where we're trying to build that balance up to buy stuff, equipment for the department down the road? That was one of our conversations we had over the last two days, is our fees and the township money, we've been trying to set that aside to have a, a fund and build money in that when we need to go out and buy, you know, somewhat larger equipment.
Okay, but what does that do with the fire marshal's loan?
That's how we were going to repay that side of the fire marshal's office loan.
Oh, okay.
It's from that fire fee fund.
You also had, and the big one is, is you have an agree, you have an agreement that would need a fair amount of back and forth, potentially. $6,000 to $7,000 is normal bond council fees. But you, but in, in Iowa, you can, you can't collateralize our fire truck. Right. Under the codes, you have some issues that have to be worked through with, with the, with the agreement. It's also not a guarantee that we would receive the funding anyway. So it is, it is in, it is in our opinion, or my opinion, that it is best to save that opportunity for another time. I mean, that $150,000 or similar funds would be available for a, a no-interest loan for other fire equipment down the line, and then you wouldn't be collateralizing a million-dollar fire truck for a $150,000 loan.
Sure.
So I, I.
Is that really a risk?
How big of a risk is that really? We've never defaulted on a loan yet.
It's a very low risk. It's just, it's just the, all the paperwork that goes, that goes with it.
In other words, there's a better use for it down the road.
Right, so in other words, if you go with the million, like, if you go with the even million-dollar note, and then you, in the back of your mind, if you need other fire equipment later, then that, that $150,000 fire marshal loan would be available, you know, in that capacity.
Yeah, here, here, example, I'm just pulling this off of our capital improvement plan for the fire department. In budget year '25, '26, we have an estimated $75,000 for an air compressor, to replace our breathing air compressor. We could use that funds for that, where we wouldn't have to budget money, but we could go out and borrow that. Fire marshal's loan are, out into 20, in the 2032, we have $200,000 for air packs. The 15 years is up and you got to replace them. So I mean, there's some things like in that that you could use that money for. So if you saved it for a rainy day, those are two potential items, just a quick look at the capital improvement plan. Or in 20, '27, '28, we have $275,000 for a tanker. You know, that's six years away.
I am of the agreement that as far as the bond interest rates go, now would be the, the time to capitalize on that, so I guess that, I'm, I'm satisfied with that.
So in the, in the presentation by the department, Chuck, you had some figures per, per option on new. You had figures listed on, on the presentation, and you're, and if I, if I'm correct, the Spartan is your guys' recommendation moving forward? And you had a figure of $1,066,000.
Correct.
Is that a standing quote that's good for how long?
I believe it was 30 days? I think it said on the quote, I don't have that in front of me, I want to say 30 days.
Right in front of me.
It's May 20, but he, Eric said it was still good.
I think I remember something about 60 days. Eric, 60 days? And that was from May 20.
So that figure should not change as we move forward in securing funding and all of that, I take it? That kind of thing, not running any risk of having to elevate that. Okay, thanks for the clarification.
This would also be the, the most swift.
As far as build times?
Yes.
Yes.
Unless you went with the Pierce.
Pierce was shorter.
Pierce was much shorter, they could have by the, I think the end of October, by year 1.2.
They've got one in progress.
They have one in progress.
So with that figure, Sam, what is, what is, what are we looking at if we were to look at bond, like we just discussed, straight bond? What figure are we looking at?
Roughly about $1 million.
I would go with an even million, Tom.
Okay, and that, and we're putting the insurance money against this, correct?
Well, there's some, will there be any insurance money left over after the rental?
That's separate.
That is separate?
That's separate. The rental's $100,000.
Okay, yeah, it's part of the coverage.
Part of the coverage.
So, so what we got for a, for a settlement on the old truck, we can apply towards this $1 million, correct?
Well, towards the overage. So it'd be $66,000 plus whatever, what was it, $180,000 we got?
Yeah, right, yeah.
$180,021.60.
Okay, all right.
If I might.
Yep.
So, Tom, I think one of the questions you might have is, is regarding the, the potential gap in the, in the rental. So if the new truck comes.
Correct.
A year from now, we have roughly 10 months, I think, of rental coverage, so.
I thought they were going to go, go for a year.
Yep, I think they would go up to a year, but that isn't guaranteed.
Not a guarantee.
Because that truck, that truck is still for sale. So that's something that, that's something that I would, that I would, I would need to hammer that agreement out with them this summer so that we could keep, keep that until the new truck arrives.
So is there still then some work we need to do to ascertain the figure that we would be taking action on that?
I'm comfortable with the do not exceed of a million, because I think, I think, I think either way it works out. And if we have to come up with $14,000 or $15,000 for, for, for some more rental, I think that we can, we can figure that out, and I think that, that maybe could come from the fire depreciation fund.
Yeah, I'm just trying to clarify how much we're talking about and, and the stability of that figure.
Do you mind if I ask the vendor, Eric, do you mind stepping up? So my question to you is regarding the, the timeframe of the delivery.
Before you say anything else, state your name for the record, please.
Eric Boes with BuildFire.
Okay, thank you.
So the, one of the significant factors in the quotes is that, you know, they're, they're relatively close together. And yours is roughly a year, and the Rosenbauer quote is, is 450 days.
Yep.
The 150 days has become really a deciding factor, it sounds like. So the question to you is, is how, how confident you are that you could meet that timeframe in the, in the quote? And then secondly, is there any chance of being able to put a rush on that?
Confidence-wise, I'm, we always figure high, so we're, right now, we're at 330 days. And obviously with the year that we had last year, those dates have gone up slightly. So we're upticked a little bit based on 2020's COVID issues. So 330 is a safe number, whether, and it's all time sensitive, so usually we start our clock on basically when the contracts are signed, and that way we start from that day forward, whether we do a pre-construction meeting, you know, a couple of weeks after that. So it's kind of time is of the essence type of thing, so it's 330 days from that time of contract. So I have no problems see, or hitting the 330 days at this point, so if, you know, but again, that's always moving from the time of when it's initiated, so.
So would you be willing to put that into the contract that?
330 days? Yeah, it would be stated in the contract.
To where there would be penalty of beyond 330 days?
I'd have to go back and get approval, but yeah, that's something that we do frequently, is put in a penalty clause of exceeding that. And the best way money spent-wise is probably a performance bond. That's usually the simplest way to do it.
Right. I, I think there's some prudence to doing, looking into that because of what we're talking about, the extra expense of rental that would be incurred by not meeting that.
Yep.
Commitment, so.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, like I said, performance bond is your best bet, so.
So a worst-case scenario, 10 months from now, we have the rental has, either it's been sold or it has to go back. We can't, I mean, how long have we been without a truck now? Two, three months?
Since April, or since March 18.
I mean, so a worst-case scenario, we could, we've gotten along without one for three months now, it's not an ideal situation, I realize.
You're gambling.
Right, I realize that, but can it be done? It is being done, so.
We could have used it though, in that meantime.
I realize that, I realize that, but worst-case scenario, it's not there, it's not the end of the world.
I know that.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I don't expect that to happen, but, I mean.
We can get by with it, just like you could get by with one service van for your business.
Right.
Is it the ideal world?
It's not.
No.
It's not an ideal.
No.
But we could, you could do it. We have been doing it, so I mean, we can do it.
But it puts added risk on the fire department. Correct, guys?
I don't think anyone's advocating that we go longer, but I think.
Just stating the fact.
I agree. I mean, we're spending a lot of time discussing what we can't be without and what up with the rental, but we have, we're in that situation now, and we're dealing with it, so.
We were. We have the rental here.
Okay, we were in that situation up until whenever this truck came, but I mean, we deal with that down the road. If that becomes a po, if that becomes a reality, and I don't think it will.
Then I guess we'll have to pay for it somehow.
So the, the insurance clause that's covering our rental, current rental, did that begin when we received the rental?
Yes.
And what does the insurance cover? Is it 12 months? Is it 10 months? How many months?
$100,000.
It was close to 10 months.
That would have been 10 months.
So it's not stated in month at the dollar a month?
So the 10 months is exhausting the insurance's $100,000 contribution towards rental, okay?
And Jeremy with Friendly Mountain told us that as soon as we knew the direction we were going and how long the order would take, they would work with us in the last few months. And there would be, I think it was a dollar a month.
Yeah.
So it's just a matter of, of, of me reserving it with him.
I would say right now, I, I think it's to our advantage is to get the ball rolling on the new unit, get the contract where we need it to be at, get it signed so the clock starts sooner.
Yep.
That will help us on the back end. And then, we can then monitor how that progresses as we move along through the process, and we can address those issues when and if they are coming about. But it looks to me that at 10 months, that's about 330 days, right?
Correct.
So, I mean, we're, we're awful close, but for the reasons that the department laid out, they're trying to get it here as quick as they can for the, for the purposes that they feel is important, and for me as a councilman and city government, we want to get it here too. So I think we just need to make sure what we know, we're going to bond, that that covers it, that we don't have any extra costs beyond what the manufacturer is stating they can deliver it by. So we have some, so we have some assurance that those dollars aren't going to be an issue for us financially and, and move along. That's my opinion. That's my opinion.
If I might. Chief, I got a question for you. So my, my question is that when we did the pumper a few years ago, there were a couple of minor change orders. So we should talk briefly about how we would handle the fun, the funding for potential change orders? Do you foresee? It's hard to know, but do you? We don't want to do is be in a, in a position where we're surprised by a, a change order and then trying to figure out where that funding will come from. Let me step up here, Scott.
Where it sits right now, I don't see any changes, because we kind of, we spec'd them all out how we wanted them. We made them all real close. And we made them bare minimum. We didn't put, we didn't put the nuts, we didn't put a lot of extra stuff on it. So to go through the specs, I don't think it'll take that long. Our end is not going to take long. Your end on the financing might take longer than ours.
So you're confident in the spec, as it sits, without any variant later?
Not a whole lot of custom?
Speaking for the department, you know, it's funny to think, this big of a truck, there's not a lot of the crazy options.
Right.
You know, the pumper, there's a lot of other little stuff. And as you start putting brackets and things like that in the truck, you need, oh, you need this bracket to put this on here, you need an outlet here, that's going to change things. This is pretty straightforward, you know? Even though it's such a big thing, it's pretty straightforward. So, you know, we've done a pretty good job of looking at specs and looking at the used ones that didn't have what we needed to change on, and then adding that to the, to the newer ones. So hydraulic hoses, so it's down low, or things like that, there's just different options.
Okay.
We stand.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Then we're going to move on into our public input portion. I don't know if anybody wants to speak. I think it's all, pretty much all fire or emergency services here. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak to this issue at this time? Tom, the only guy on Zoom?
He is.
Okay. So we can move forward from that. Additional council discussion and direction. So we're going to need a motion. And is now is your time for additional discussion. So do we, do we decide on the which quote first, and then how to pay for it? Is that, or is this all together?
I think you can do it all together.
All together? Oh, I am, I for one am in favor of going with the, the recommended build from, from Spartan. That was, that will use monies from a general obligation bond for not to exceed $1 million. Does that support? And that would be for? Emergency services vehicle equipment, not just the truck, correct? Is that what we're saying?
Be general, general purpose.
More or less stated here in the recommendations.
If I might, before we
Yep.
So, Scott, maybe you can help me with this. So if we do a million-dollar note, and then we have roughly $180,000 in, in insurance proceeds, so that gives us 1.18 million dollars. We spend $1,066,000, that leaves us roughly $114,000 that could be spent on other emergency service purposes. If, as we move into the hearing, the council has the ability up until the actual issuance to, to take on only the amount of debt that we had, you know, basically $100,000 less. If we did that, how does that impact the interest rates? If we do a $900,000 note versus a $100,000 note?
I don't think a swing like that's going to have a major impact on your interest rate. So I don't know that I would get too caught up in impact to the interest rate you're going to achieve bond sale as a result of that. And we'll say you're going to have some, I mean, I like to get paid as far as there. You know, we talked about bond council fees previously. Now, they're going to have some cost against this, so you know, you're going to have some financing cost that's going to come out of that number as well. So just layer that in, I guess, to your consideration as you're contemplating this as well.
Thank you. So I'm just looking at the last line of the recommended motion. It said, if the fire marshal loan does not work out, which we are, that's where we're at, then $15,000 of payments could also come from the new fire debt capital improvement fund. Are we, is that in, still on the table, or is that also out?
If I might.
Yep.
I think that would be on the table in each budget discussion.
Okay.
So the, the fault, the, the general position is it would be general obligation. But then we would have the ability through the general, through the annual budgeting process to say, you know what, this fund is doing well enough that I think they can swing $15,000. Or we could look at local option sales tax or, or other funds. We've done that with other, with others as well. That answer your question?
It does. Wayne, you've made the motion. Are you fine with that? Yeah, I'm good with the change, yes. Okay. And Pete, you seconded it?
I'm fine.
Okay. Anything else? Those are going to call for the question. Roll call, please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Eggerd?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Very good. To the fire department, thank you for all your work on this. You have, well, it's been a learning process for all of us. But I think your presentation, all that you did to make this possible has convinced us all, I think this is the best decision for this community. So thank you again for not only the work you've done on the loan, but every day protecting our city. Appreciate it. Moving on then to item eight, an update on our water conservation measures. Todd, you, are you going to address that?
Yeah, sure. I put a, a short explanation in your packets. Essentially, conservation has helped. If you'd like to see more, a little bit of rain has helped. Like to see more. I still feel like if you don't conserve a little more or get significant rainfall, we're on path towards mandatory restrictions. What that date is, I can't tell you that today. If you could help us out with a little more conservation, maybe stay away from it.
The average 1.2 million, is that higher than we've had in past year, normal?
Yes. I, I would say normal for this time of year. Past year, it'd be You know, I keep advertising, helping to see that, that we think could sustain 1.1. We're averaging about $100,000. We're getting by today, but we won't, won't get by all summer like, I don't see that happening. Not without significant rain.
Okay. Any comments or questions regarding this issue?
You feel people aren't cooperating, or what's, what's the reasoning for the extra?
I still think there's a lot of folks out there, some are. Guys, I don't know the exact, I guess, I think there was a lot of receding, but talking to other communities and other rural waters, we are not alone. They are all using, every community that I've spoken. Can't exactly... We're in a drought, and it's been, it's easy to get hot.
Yeah, I'm assuming it's because of the drought condition that everyone's trying to compensate for, so. Okay. So at this point, continue as we are stressed to the community to conserve even more. Okay.
Bye-bye here. All right. Receive that for information. And at this point, we take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support. Roll call, please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Ken.
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Eggerd?
Aye.